All right, the time being seven oh one, I'll call the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen to order. Pursuing the Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the meaning law, which is general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen. And the Governor's March fifteen twenty twenty order concerning imposition on strict limitations on number of people they may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And I will start with attendance. Selectmen, Triano.
Present.
Selectmen La Blank.
Present.
Selectmen Daniels.
Present.
Selectmen Sad is not with us this evening, and I am Selectman Lamash. There are four of us. We have a quorum. We will go on with our agenda. The first item is a cannabis cultivation approval and execution. I'll turn that over to Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm having trouble with my video piece, so I'm gonna shoot from the hip here. I wanted to place before the board something that is timely. We have Bay State's very own LLC, which is a business that approached the town about opening the town's, potentially opening the town's first cultivation center for marijuana. We have done a retail host agreement and we have done a medicinal, but we have not done a cultivation. So it's a little bit different. We had the owner, Ken Lucas, come before the board on two occasions. We've gone through what I would consider to be the normal vetting process. And now we are at the phase where we're placing before the board consideration of a host agreement. This is going to be a seven thousand plus square foot cultivation center that basically is up in our commercial industrial zone that has been relegated or designated for marijuana businesses. So, having said that, I know you've seen the entire presentation. What's contained in this host agreement are all of the things that I think we had gotten feedback from and a couple of things that are there, but in a different form. And that is mostly because of the request of the actual owner of the business. But we had legal counsel very much vested in the process to make sure this business will have the items that it had suggested to this board that it was willing to have. The first item, which always is very important to a community, has to do with the community impact fee, which for gross sales will be set at three percent for each year. This is a five-year agreement unless the state changes its rules. And having said that, because it's a cultivation center, it is a little bit different. This is not something that really came up in the presentations, but it's something both myself and our attorney thought was important. And that is if the cultivation center business decides to open up a retail business and supply product, meaning marijuana, to sell at their business, that we would still capture that within our three percent impact fee as much as fifty percent of the retail price that it would be if they were selling to an entity that wasn't owned by them for retail purposes. The other piece of it that's new in this host agreement is the fact that besides a community impact fee, I'm going to have contained in this, if the board approves it, an actual annual community benefit payment. Now, annual community benefit payments are different. It's something where when you're looking at it from the perspective of a host agreement, it's something that the owner is willing to do that will somehow benefit the community. The owner and I had a lot of conversations about specific types of programs in town, particularly the community center, some others. So this is being set at amount equal to, on an annual basis, thirty-five thousand dollars in addition to the three percent community impact fee. So I was really pleased that the owner was willing to do that. The other piece of it was very important to some selectmen, obviously it's a cultivation center. And we want to make sure that the town reserves its rights, especially with feedback from residents, that the owner will be able to not only report to the board, but with a certain number of residential inquiries or complaints or concerns would actually address a problem. And we have that contained in there. The other pieces of it that we have contained in a different way, the owner had done a presentation about wanting to do community charitable items as well. And that included scholarships, not to exceed ten thousand dollars a year in point five percent that they had in there. The one of the things that we, one of the reasons why it took a little bit longer, we had our legal counsel and the owner had differences of opinion about what gets put into a host agreement. And the owner is very willing to outline the things that he did in the presentation, especially with regards to diversity in hiring and employment of those who would work at the facility, looking to be an equal opportunity employer in terms of charitable benefits, looking to say that they will do some charitable work in town. But they wanted to only put that initially in their application to the CCC, which is different and not something our legal counsel has seen. So we went back and forth on that a number of times. I reduced some of the language to be amenable to the business owner. And at the end of the day, they felt comfortable with some of the verbiage that we took out, but knowing that they're gonna put it completely into their CCC application. So I think those are pretty big pieces of it. The other piece was hours of operation. They actually wanted to go from six o'clock in the morning to something like twelve midnight. I asked to have that scaled back, knowing that, you know, you may have work is coming and going at a facility that has high security on the inside and somewhat on the outside, but I thought seven AM to ten PM, which is pretty standard and sometimes even less hours of operation for some facilities. But knowing there's not a ton of residents right nearby, I'd still thought it was important because it's kind of out of the way that we have some hours of operation where we know our police have, you know, a strong enough force to make sure and ensure security. So there are a lot of provisions in here. I hope you got an opportunity to see from odor control technology, waste water and waste controls, water consumption, electric usage, renewable energy requirements, trying to keep air quality at a premium and keep air from inside the facility not escaping as much as possible. And, you know, pretty much that those are the kind of things that I think make it a very good host agreement. I'm pleased with it. I think it has some new things and it also has some things that other communities would express to our community in hindsight they wish they had done in their host agreements. So having said that, you have it before you, I hope, and I strongly recommend that the board consider approving that host agreement this evening.
Thank you, Town Manager. I'll entertain a motion that the board approve that host agreement.
I would make a motion that the board approve the host community agreement with BVO LLC.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second, any comments?
Mr. Oh, go ahead. Selectmen Triano, go right ahead.
Oh, thanks, Cheryl. I just wanted to say to Town Manager, thank you for making this a priority and bringing the new business into town. You can tell that you put a lot of work into it and it seems very well done. So I just wanted to say thank you for prioritizing it.
Cheryl.
Yes, Jen, if I can, I just wanted to clarify. So is the thirty-five thousand dollar fee, is that a one-time, like initial startup fee? Or is that to be expected every year?
That's, that is an annual contribution every year. It's considered an annual benefit, community benefit payment. And that, that would be on an annual basis in addition to the three percent. See, the three percent typically in the Cannabis Commission is looking at community impact fees more closely about the actual costs related to the business that impact the community. So doing that business has a certain cost to it, whether it's increased presence of police, whether it's increased traffic on the roads, increased potential drug use by people that might require increased education and training and counseling. So they look for specific ways that, and we're gonna have to keep track of that going forward. It's in the more precise ways it sounds like from the CCC, although there is a case pending, you know, in the Supreme Judicial Court that argues, you know, for and against how much the CCC can regulate and ask a town to do. But it looks like it's going in that direction, which is one of the reasons I was a little bit, you know, making sure that some of those things that we take into consideration. Whereas an annual community benefit payment is different. It's not a community impact fee related to the cost of doing the business. This is an agreement by the owner to actually contribute for a benefit to the community, however we spell that out, you know, on an annual basis of thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So it's in addition.
So would that be something that would go to free cash, Jen? Or would that go to offset expenses?
Initially, any payment that comes to the town would actually get designated into the general fund and then get re-appropriated how we, you know, would consider it. How we get it set up, I haven't really talked to our finance director about how we would do that. But, you know, initially my thoughts are it would come, you know, in, but with the understanding that we would want to reallocate it, not, not so dissimilar to other kinds of agreements that, that the town makes and has specific items. Now, we did not specify the exact community benefits that we would want to put it towards. We have some ideas, you know, but at the end of the day, all of that would have to get re-appropriated.
Got it. And I would, I would assume that, um, I mean, I remember when we did Cure Leaf, like it took, it took a while for them to kind of get ramped up and then start, you know, I mean, I think it took them, I want to say, I want to say it took, it took them almost a year to kind of get fully ramped up, built out. Are we looking at kind of the same thing on this one too, Jen?
It's me, like the owner is really, he's got most of his application already done, which is one of the reasons we wanted to try to get this inked as soon as possible because they need that to actually complete the application process. How long it takes them will be, I think, I'm getting indications that they want to be able to, to do this as quickly as possible. Having said that, there may be, you know, they're, they're in dialogue constantly, the owner is, in particular with those who were supposed to be state-of-the-art in the industry and have best practices on how to ramp up a facility as quickly as possible. But they still have to go through permitting processes, go through the planning board in which there could be requirements placed upon them before they open to meet. And so this thing is an agreement in terms of, once they're operational and what would the facility be like once it's going forward. We do have the annual community benefit. I agree to prorate that based on whenever they start that, that year. You know, in previous ones, sometimes we'll ask them to make a contribution even before they start. But because this was more important to try to get the community benefit payment, I thought was important because that has more lasting effect than just, you know, putting in, waiting two, two more months for a first payment once they're operational. Didn't seem like as much of an importance to the owner or to myself and legal counsel. So, so as far as how fast, you know, I think that they will do really their, their utmost to get operational as quickly as possible. I do feel that way with this business.
But they're not opening tomorrow.
Yeah.
Huh? They're not opening tomorrow.
No, no.
I could say.
But they, but like I said, they, they have a real vested interest in wanting to use state-of-the-art technology. And I don't doubt that with the owner. He said this is, you know, one of his dream come true. So I think that will be indicated.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, any more questions or comments? Not seeing any, then I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's four and affirmative, one absent, that execution is approved, that host agreement, great. Next item on our agenda is a request by the school department to suggest that all these items that we've received in our list from April twenty second, twenty-six, I mean, surplus. So, Town Manager, do you need to explain anything or?
No, they're, they're outdated, you know, computer monitors. They want to be able to surplus them. They're everything from toner to old cameras to printers. They have a pretty good understanding of what's old for them and what's not. And I, I know that they would be eager to try to surplus it. And if they can recoup any money by putting it out there, they will do that. And somebody might actually buy them and maybe they make a little bit of money. But I don't know exactly what their intention is. I just know that this is a normal thing that, you know, every so many years they go through and the technology becomes more obsolete and ill-equipped for the needs of the classroom.
All right, thank you. So I'll open up to the board for a motion.
I would make a motion that the board declare the items listed on the attached email from the school department dated April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one as surplus.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare that surplus. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, four and affirmative, one absent. Those items we have are surplus. Thank you. Next item is a acceptance of a donation from Laura Wilson to the senior center. I would open that up to the board also.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I was just gonna give recognition to Carol White. This is her second donation of like a hundred dollars. I, I give her a lot of credit. She loves the meal program that we're running and she wrote a little note. I don't know if that was, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's in your pocket. It basically says, you know, whatever expense that they want to, you know, help defray plastic containers or whatever related to the meal program. So we really thank her for that and I just wanted the board to know that. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. Sorry, I should have went to you first, so stepping out of bounds a little. So we'll go back to Megan, go ahead.
I would make a motion that the board accept the donation of one hundred dollars from Carol White to the Oxford Senior Center in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, to accept this donation.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept that. Any comments? Not hearing any, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's four and affirmative, one absent. We thank Carol very, very much. Very nice. All right. Next item is police, Police Week proclamation. So I have a proclamation and a little tongue-twisted there that I'd like to read in the record. This is going to the Oxford Police, whereas Police Chief Anthony Sad has said, "The department's members are dedicated to meet the challenges and demands of a changing society, and I am proud to serve with these fine offices. Oxford police officers are trained in different disciplines such as community policing, criminal investigations, medical first response, child abuse, traffic control, domestic violence, firearms, K-9 zacks, information technology, crime scene processing, evidence gathering and presentation, drone flights, and a host of other areas in addition to performing patrol duties. And whereas these dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career, playing a central role in preserving the freedom, rights, safety and security of the citizens of Oxford. And whereas during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the members of the Oxford Police Department have provided a vital public service facing the threat of violence and danger and routinely putting their lives on the line to defend ours. And whereas it is important that all the citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of the members of the Oxford Police Department, and that members of the department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And therefore, be resolved that we, the board of selectmen of the town of Oxford, call upon all our citizens in all patriotic civic and educational organization, organizations to observe the week of May ninth through the fifteenth in the year twenty twenty-one as National Police Week. And this is given under this day of April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one by the entire board and our Town Manager. And so with that, I'll open that up to the board.
Just wanted to, if I could, Mr. Chair.
I'll go right ahead, Selectman Triano.
As I always say, I just want to say it again tonight. Thank you to the chief and the police department for everything that you do every day for our town because you definitely make it a better, safer place to live in. And we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, yes, please.
I would also like to just echo. It's, you know, reading through the proclamation, I, I always enjoy seeing the list of everything that encompasses being a police officer and a first responder. It's not just doing traffic stops and writing tickets. Just the, the list in that first paragraph that you read just shows the amount of training that has to take place, the wealth of knowledge that all our professional police officers have. It's difficult times, but, you know, time and time again, Oxford Police Department remains extremely professional. And just thank you for everything you guys do.
You're welcome.
Well, I do see the chief there. Chief, do you have anything because you've already said a month full of that first statement?
Absolutely, I, I do. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Selectmen Triado, Selectmen La Blank, Selectmen Daniels, and it's unfortunate that Selectmen Sad is not here. And also you, Madam Town Manager, the support that we receive from your body and the management of this town is second to none. And it's really refreshing to see that in light of what's going on. And we, we all see it every day, some police departments aren't really supported the way that I feel that our department is by the continual positive reinforcement that, that you give at every meeting. I hear it at every meeting. You're always talking about the offices and the great job that they do. And, and they hear it, it gets back to them and they truly appreciate it. And it's a good, it's a good pick-me-up for them. And I, I just have to say that I'm truly fortunate to lead such a group of talented individuals. And as Selectman Daniel said, there's a lot that goes into the training aspect of it for policing and they have to be a jack-of-all-trades. They, they have to have some knowledge of every single component that was read. They may not be experts in each area, but they have a good understanding and they know how to pass the baton, so to speak, if something rises above their level of training. And we have people in place that can handle that. So we're, we're really fortunate and they've all risen to the challenges that we know are out there. And I'm really proud to lead this department. We, we have a great group, all thirty-three people from, you know, our administrative staff to the dispatches, to the offices and part-time offices. It's a great team and I think we've put a great product on the street. And we, we're continually getting positive responses from the citizens. As a matter of fact, today, there's a local company who wrote us a very nice letter of support and decided to buy all the shift pizzas and provided drinks and sodas. And so every single shift today is, is going to get a meal of appreciation from this company. And it, it happens often, it happens weekly. And, and you know what? And, and we need it now, we, we really do. We, we need that type of support moving forward because, you know, a lot of offices are, are just getting depressed by watching the news and everything they see. They continually get hammered with the negativity. So fortunately for us, I think I've said it before in front of this board, that this town is an exception. I think we're different. I think the people truly appreciate all the public services here, not only police, but fire EMS. I think everybody does a great job and we all act as, as a great team. So thank you for, for recognizing Police Week that's coming up during May ninth to the fifteenth. And what we're gonna do is in the fall, we're gonna do a memorial service in front of the Hartland Memorial and recognize the officers' names who are on the monument. So when that happens, I will send a notice out to the board and you will be more than welcome to attend that ceremony. And once again, thank you very much. We, we truly appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
No, I think it's the other way around, Chief. We need to thank you. You, I think you make, you know, I'm just speaking for myself. I shouldn't say this as a board, just myself. I think you make my job easy, you and all the officers because we've got such a good group of dispatches and clerical staff and our offices are top-notch that, you know, when you have such a good group of people, as far as I'm concerned, it makes my job as a board member so much easier. And, you know, Selectman Triano said it tonight and I, and I've always said it, you know, and it's repetitive, but you're so good, you know? We really are so fortunate. You know, I go to other towns and, and I see, you know, some of the people there and we're just so fortunate. We have a great, great force. And thanks to you because it does start at the top, you know? I think you have, since you've become chief, things have really scaled up on a higher notch. And so thank you to you and all your staff as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you're welcome. And, and, and it makes my job easier too because we have such competent individuals here. Everybody that hits the street goes out with good intent. Their intentions are good and they want to make a difference. And we see that every day. And that's why we get the positive feedback from our community. So again, to the entire board, thank you again.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for coming to our meeting tonight also, Chief. Appreciate it.
Have a great night.
You too. All right, so that leads us to our selectmen announcements. If any of our selectmen have anything to say.
I don't have anything tonight.
Great. No one else? I do have one thing. I had a very, very nice discussion with Jean O'Reilly. And it, through the efforts of our town clerk, she contacted the Historical Association to discuss the Oxford cane. Now, the Oxford cane is usually given out, I guess, or in other communities also for people that live in Oxford that are like the oldest person in the town or something like that. And ours have disappeared. We used to have a couple and we don't anymore. So that's why the town clerk went to the Historical Commission. And so Jean informed me that they have agreed to come up with the money for a new cane. And I guess we're gonna make a nice display case. And she didn't want me to elaborate too much more because it's still in the works. But I just thought it was something that the board should know and will be an integral part of that because it's through us that the person that is selected to receive the, the town cane comes through us. because it's through us that the person that is selected to receive the, the town cane comes through us. So it was a very nice conversation. It was nice to hear that, you know, town clerk has stepped up like that and the Historical Commission is also. So just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. We'll probably be discussing that in future meetings once we know more information. So, not seeing any other people saying anything, then I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Four in affirmative, one absent. Thank you so much for coming to this special meeting. Sorry we had to do this, but a lot going on, I guess, in town. So, thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you all.